I will call the order of the Bucksport Planning Board meeting for January second, twenty twenty four. Roll call.
George Hansen.
Here.
Terry Doughty.
Here.
Jay Duross.
Here.
Richard Peterson.
Here.
Crystal Harland.
Here.
Marcus Lucian.
Here.
Michael Haydock.
Here.
Reviewing acceptance of meeting of minutes of February, uh, excuse me, for December fifth, twenty twenty three. The witches of the board.
Move that we accept the amendments, Mr. Haydock.
I'll second it.
Want to second that? Moving and seconded, any more discussion need to be done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes. Carried. Three chairs report, there is no chairs report. Code enforcement officers report.
I know you're all wondering about the spring fountain. It's, uh... It's a mess. There's several illegal immigrants working up there doing unpermitted work, and I've issued a stop work order and I have no idea why they're doing it or what they're trying to accomplish. They're sheet rocking before they enclose the structure and sheet rocking over electrical that needs to be replaced and all sorts of issues, so...
Having an uncontained fire in the middle of the room.
Three times.
Three.
Yeah, so...
Wow.
But it's in the lawyer's hands, so... But other than that, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay. Code enforcement office report, we've already gone through that. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, A, minor subdivision review. Allard property applicant Abram Allard, location State Route forty six, map twenty five, lot thirteen dash five. Mister Allard. Come on to the podium, please.
Hey, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
So I'm not much of a public speaker, and this is the first sub development, so any questions you have about the plan that I can't answer, I can, I can get them. And do you have any questions about the plan?
So this was a, it's a hundred and forty-five acre lot that, uh, back in two thousand and eleven, they were gonna put that quarry on, and it went round and round and round, I'm sure you were part of all of that, George. And it didn't end up happening. Um, some folks from Texas came up, bought that land, and they put a house out way out back, and they divided off a ten acre parcel this past summer and sold it to Abram. And now Abram wants to divide it in half and put two spec houses on it. But his division, after they just divided it, turns it into a subdivision. So, um, that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah, so I thought, uh, I've learned a lot, um, that it would be a one-time split where it changed donors. I didn't realize that we inherited the sub development thing, so... But what we wanna do, actually, one of them is an income property, the three, three acre piece, and then the seven acre piece we're hoping to build on for a house for us to keep.
Oh.
Yeah, 'cause we have four kids that go to Warrington, uh, grade school, Center Drive, and we wanted to get into something a little bit bigger, and they're gonna end up going to Bucksport High School, so that was the plan.
Do we have any copies left for us?
Um, I do have some hard copies in my office on the... Sorry. I think you guys looked at it last, last meeting and, um, unofficially.
Yeah, Boynton has been great helping me through the ordinance, um, the survey company, and we have our wetland delineations overlaid, um, along with the elevations, so, um... We're compliant with the two hundred feet of our road frontage. We have our second entrance for, you know, down the road, I don't think the second house is gonna happen anytime soon. We don't have a loan yet for it, so trying to take it one step at a time.
You want one for each member?
Well...
What was the subsequent number?
I'm sorry, the signing. Did you mention that there was something other than it says twenty twenty-three to help?
The original one didn't have a sign on it, I don't think.
Oh, okay.
Do you guys share those, one went down there?
We're sharing, I'm sharing.
Sure.
They come back to that.
I saw you trying to walk away.
So there's no roads, just driveways.
Yeah.
He has entrance permits from DOT.
Yeah, I have those if you need to see them too. For the second entrance.
Who did your wetland delineation?
Uh, David Mois, Mois Environmental.
Did they get a jurisdictional determination from Army Corps or...?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can get it.
Luke, who, who typically verifies delineations?
I usually take David's word for it, he's been doing it for ever, but...
Okay.
I've never talked to the Army Corps before, I think that's maybe something we do up here, but maybe.
So really, we just look at the three acres right now because you don't have a building to go on for the other piece?
Right, yeah, we have, uh, so they did note on there on the plan, um...
And the second lot will say that, you're gonna keep that a seven acre lot anyway.
Yeah, right, and then they're, they did do, uh, Mois did a, uh, a test pit for a septic system that was approved on... I don't know if I can, if you can move, uh, out.
What do you wanna see?
Uh, I guess it'd be the, the, the southeast, there's a, right in, in this corner.
Go down, it's a lot too.
There's, that's where the, the house would be, there's a little bit of a view up there, and, uh, that's where we're thinking, that's where we put the test pit, that's where the other house might go.
Okay.
So you're going to build on the three acres?
Uh, no, we're gonna, we're gonna, um, try to do an investment property on the
Three acres.
Three acres, and then keep the seven for us.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, sorry if I didn't explain that right, but that's what we're, we wanna try to do.
So the house is gonna be down here, near where, um, the septic, is that what you said?
On the three acre one?
No, on the seven acre one.
Yeah, that...
Up in that top.
Up on the corner.
Bottom corner or whatever, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I see where the driveway is, it seems far, but...
Well, we wanted to capture some of that view, I guess, but at least we have options, 'cause we have that second, uh, entrance where you need, you know, four hundred and twenty-five feet of line of sight for safety to, to issue a, a new driveway. We inherited a driveway when we bought it, and then we were able to get a second driveway on the piece that we're gonna keep.
On, on the three acre lot, there's an area that looks like has an existing gravel driveway.
Yep.
And then to the right, it says wetland impact, eleven hundred square feet roughly?
Yep, where you're allowed to impact up to fourteen hundred square feet without, uh, a, a DEP, um, needing to be involved. And then if you do impact more than that, I think it's, a DEP has to do some more, you know... I don't know if you, it's a, a per eight, a per square foot thing, um, but that's the allowed, what you're allowed to, to impact.
We're not really doing anything over there, though.
Um, I...
'Cause the septic is up behind the house.
Yeah, I don't know how they determine that, um, where...
Septic's up here.
Yep, um, you know, some of that, and it's not in a shoreland zone, so...
You have them up front, you could move this forward too if you needed to, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Looks like you've got plenty of room between.
Oh, yeah, yep, yep, it's a nice, the three acre lot is a nice lot too. Um, I have the house planned too, if you wanna see it, the, and it's coming along, we're hopefully gonna be insulating, you know, next week.
Awesome.
Do we have any others?
Oh, I notified him twice. They got notified for the last month, and they got notified again for this one.
Okay, and none of them are here tonight?
I don't know if any of these folks, nobody's raising their hand, so I'm guessing not.
Any property abouters, Mister Allard's projected? I would take that as a no.
Okay. Yeah, where we built to, you can't really see, there's no visible houses, and we're not, uh, you know... We're not in any way negatively impacting or devaluing their land. Houses out there are pretty far apart anyway, so...
Does the board have any more questions for Mister Allard?
I don't.
Anything?
Good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Uh, again, no, there are no property abouters here, Mister Allard's property, who was speaking, David, against. Uh, I guess the board can move forward, anybody care to make a motion?
My motion to approve.
Motion's made, approved, anyone want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, moving and seconded, that this, this be approved. Any more discussion need to be done? All those in favor? Those opposed? You have your project, Mister Allard, thank you.
Uh, I have one more question, what's the next, uh, Scott?
I'll have them sign this before they leave tonight. You can pick it up tomorrow and take it down to the registry and register it. I'll look into it.
Good, thank you, next item. Subdivision review. Phase two housing, forty unit apartment building, applicant Penquess Development, Inc. Location forty-four Middle Street, map thirty-four, lot fifty-three. Luke?
Um, it's only been a couple of months since we last saw these folks for phase one, and I was a little surprised at how quick phase two came along, but I'm excited about it.
Yeah.
Hopefully you guys have had time to review the plans and application, it was online and, and the packets were upstairs for you to pick up, um...
Hi, everyone, Jason Berg, um, Housing Development Director for Penquess, Penquess Development, Inc., is, uh, will be the owner entity, um, of the property, the developer of the property, um, of the land itself. We actually, as an update, um, I'm sure some of the community would be curious to know that we closed on sale of the property on the twenty-ninth, um, so just before the end of the year, we were the proud new owners. So now we own it outright and, and we'll continue moving on. Um, we were, well, not as surprised, 'cause, um, obviously we're the ones that submitted it, but, um, yeah, so it is very quick, um, the, the two applications simultaneously. But a, another round of funding came out, um, from Main Housing, and that sort of expedited our plans, uh, 'cause we just didn't wanna miss the opportunity, so, um, for the eighteen unit, um, project that you all have approved from a subdivision perspective, um, we have submitted our financing application, and that is sort of pending at Main Housing, but tonight, uh, we're here to talk about the forty units, uh, which is, I'll call it our, our bread and butter. Um, this would be version, by the time it's built, four or five that we've built in the region. Um, so we, we've got it down, I wouldn't say to a science by any means, but we, we try to build largely the same structure because we can take the guesswork out of costs, um, change orders and all those sorts of things. But, um, we'll, we change the facade and do a bunch of other things, so it doesn't look the same, and you can't pick it out of a crowd, otherwise. But, um, the, the project that you have before you would sit essentially across, uh, the parking lot of the proposed, of the previously approved project.
This one?
Yes. So again, coming up, uh, to the end of forty Seminole Road, uh, Penobscot Place would be the phase two that we're talking about. Uh, forty units, all one bedrooms for fifty-five and older or older adults. And, um, the property would have adequate parking, um, as well as, um, uh, at grade or, or appropriate grade, uh, accessibility for wheelchairs, and I can't remember how many units are gonna be accessible. I'm gonna put them on the spot, I don't remember. Uh, I think we're gonna be somewhere between twelve and fifteen units. Uh, we'll be fully ADA accessible by the time we're done. Uh, that's not only because that's the, um, the population that we're serving for the most part, and, and, but at the same time, we want people to age in place, so we do a lot, um, above and beyond those ADA units. We ensure that the other units still have grab bars and other things, um, in appropriate locations because it's, um, cheaper for us to do it once, but also it's better for those individuals to, to reside in that home, uh, for as long as they physically can. The building will be sprinkled, um, and will have no fossil fuel use, uh, in the building, we'll be using all heat pumps and, um, uh, air exchange and other things that are all electric based. I'm not sure what else, we have a pitch roof, right? Yes, yeah, because we have the height option, so we'll do a traditional, um, A-framed, uh...
Roof, how many stories is this one?
This will be three stories.
Is there an elevator?
Yes.
Is there, um, going to be some, um, generator just for like when the, if it happened to lose power? I mean, if you're dependent on electricity for heat?
Yeah, um, so we, we will, we build it into the budget, um, and we design it so that if we can afford it, we absolutely will. Um, but otherwise, if, there are instances where if, if project costs come in a lot higher, we may not be able to, and we have to pull that out. Um, but otherwise, we, um, we go through a, a fairly rigorous training with tenants, um, in the event that we don't have a generator, but, uh, sort of the, the plan B to that is we wire it for a generator, and we have a portable generator come around, spend a couple hours at the building, warm it back up, allow people to take showers, those sorts of things, and we would bring it, bring that then, that, that traveling generator around to other properties that we have in the region, uh, because otherwise, to wire for something that big, all electric, would be easily two hundred and fifty thousand if not more.
During a fast storm, they, I mean, if I lived not far, I didn't lose power, I'm lucky. I don't know if the other apartments, I mean, I don't know who else, who else lost power, if anybody else downtown, so it's, I mean, that, that's a long time, could be week, two weeks to, to do that.
Typically, the downtown is the first area they try to restore if it goes out.
Right, it's, um, one of the benefits of living downtown, so... Um, no, I just was curious, because it's, um, becoming more, it just seems like every year there's an event like this, so, and I don't know if that's weather, whatever it is, but it's more common than it used to be.
Sure.
So, um, I just was curious about your contingency, should that arise?
To the extent that we can build it into the budget, we absolutely do, um, but where, where costs are stabilizing, fingers crossed, um, we can keep it in there, but, um, right now, we will, um, so we'll submit our financing application in the next month or so, uh, maybe forty-five days, and then from there, we have to wait a bit of time before, uh, Main Housing is able to respond and say, okay, yeah, we've reviewed all the applicants, you know, you are funded or you're not, and then from there, we have to go back to our contractors and the architect and say, okay, you, you priced it at X, now based on the market conditions that have elapsed since then, let's, let's get real and, and start counting two-by-fours and, and really getting a sense. There's a lot of unknown between now and then, I guess, so I can't say with certainty that we can absolutely do it. Uh, but if not, we, we take other provisions, like I said, and also including, um, the elevator that we design obviously won't trap people in it. We have the emergency lights and things in the hallways and those kinds of things as well, so...
Um, when I was reviewing the plan, I know it doesn't say this, and I don't think it's in any thing in the code, but, um, is there, will there be some, um, internet provided for residents?
We, we traditionally provide internet.
I mean, it's not, it's not a utility necessarily, like electric, but it's becoming more a, a way of doing business. So I didn't see that where the, if they're, you're gonna bring, um, spectrum up the road or, or, you know, um...
We traditionally bring, uh, a full gig to the property, so that, our intent in what we build into our operating budget is to, um, supply internet free of cost to the tenants.
Nice.
Now, are you guys extending, I don't believe this, that I saw that, but is there, is that road just gonna stay that one road through for this part? Or are you guys gonna go down? I know about the last time we had talked about, you guys have that right of way, yeah? That passes on the other property?
Uh, this, uh, we don't have this right of way.
Oh, that's there right of way.
That was a paper street, I think that was discontinued.
Okay.
Um, this, this swath right here is ours with the frontage on McDonald. Um, we're bringing utilities up through here, and, uh, based on topography and everything else, that'll likely be our stormwater treatment, um, long-term to be able to bring and funnel, um, going back to the syllabus to make sure I'm right. Um, but yeah, to, that's where we're gonna probably end up treating, um, all of our stormwater, um, and also further down too, when we start building perhaps other phases, if, if we should be so lucky. Um, so no, we don't, we don't intend to do anything, um, from a structure perspective.
So it'll just be the one road up through?
That is correct, yeah, we will account for, and to be honest, you know, we're not done, so we may look at a phase three at some point. If we do that, we would, um, probably add a driveway to circle back around, um, versus trying to create some sort of hammerhead or something where people have to... Not that it'll be a lot of traffic, but still.
So I have a couple of questions, before I ask my question, I wanna go back to Mark. How many of your properties have generators?
Uh, I think we have a total of two or three.
That's what I was thinking.
They only run key things, yeah.
So unlikely to get a generator there, uh, is what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Uh, getting to your parking, I noticed the handicap parking is only on one side. But if I'm understanding you correctly, you're gonna have handicap over on the other side as well?
Yes.
Which means you have to put in for the vans, which I do not see.
I'm gonna turn to my friend Randy over here.
So the total number of handicap spots right now are at six. Um, that entire, uh, original parking lot is all at two percent. So very easily accessible if we need to put a couple of these spots over on this building?
Well, I was concerned because, again, they're one-bedroom units you have going in.
Sure.
All right, that doesn't mean there isn't gonna be two people in each one of those apartments. And considering the way it's gonna be set up, I would think maybe some young people might be in there, whatever, each one having a car. So as I tally up and I look, I get a little concerned about the parking, because again, it looks pretty on paper. All right, and so my, my concern is, again, it's one long parking lot, it's very nice, by the way.
That was the second comment I had for you.
Very happy with what you're doing, all right?
Yeah.
But my other concern is, do you have ordinances on your own to, if somebody leaves a, a car in a spot, that will be towed out of there? In other words, the kind of people that might be going in, I don't know. It's workforce.
Sure.
All right?
So one, one of the reasons it's a little bit flexible as well is because those, those spaces will become assigned spaces as well. So yes, if there are violators, they have a policy to get rid of.
So they, they each get one parking spot?
Designated, yes.
That's correct, yeah, it's...
So where are they gonna park otherwise?
So when, um, and I know every community is different, um, but when we have built any older adult housing, um, by the time you look at income eligibility, and if you happen to have somebody or a family or a, you know, partner, um, in a two-person household, by the time you add up their two incomes, most likely, um, if they are able to afford two cars and keep them running and on the road, they are probably over income to be eligible for our properties. Most individuals that are in our older adult properties that, like this one will be, are on social security.
It's workforce.
So, no, this, uh, sorry, Penobscot Place, if I, I, if I misspoke, I apologize, is for older adults, fifty-five and older.
Oh, but...
The previous Bucksport Village is the workforce.
Yes.
Okay, so that's very important, because I thought I was informed that it was workforce.
Yeah, I thought it was the other way around as well.
Okay, so, so my research was correct. So it is fifty-five and older?
Correct, Penobscot Place will be fifty-five and older, yes.
But the village apartments, the one that was...
We have, yes, we have the ability to, uh, rent to, um, of any age, yeah. Families in particular.
But this one will be restricted only to fifty-five and older?
Correct.
No exception?
Correct.
Okay.
That's interesting.
When you go into this plan, you actually, you must have an idea of about how many of your tenants actually will have a car? I mean, is there, is there some way you could, you know, you, you put out X amount of parking spaces for these two buildings? Uh, how can you know that, uh, there's only gonna be, and if there are eighty residents in Penobscot Place, there's only gonna be thirty of them that have a car? I mean, that, what do you base that on?
We, we have no way of knowing if someone will or will not have a car. I can tell you, though, of cro- across all of our older adult properties, our parking is maybe at sixty-five percent used. Um, we have the right to say to a renter, to a renter household, you have one parking spot. After that, if you have another car, and you know, you know, your neighbor at, in, say, unit one-ten doesn't have a car, you may decide to borrow theirs, right? But if they have a car, then you have to move. Um, it, so we've never had a problem with it, um, and the reality is, we don't, we don't wanna overbuild parking unnecessarily just because it's an impervious surface, it's a waste of money, it's gotta be plowed, it's another opportunity for someone to trip and fall, um, or slip and fall if, if we don't, uh, clean the ice and snow off well enough. Um, when we come to family properties, obviously we account for a little bit higher, and, and we make sure that, that we've got adequate, um, coverage there, but historically speaking, we, we've never had the issue. Likewise, the, the property down below, um, the Knoxview Apartments, that, um, that building, I think, right now has, as far as we can tell, and every time we've been there, um, something like fifteen empty parking spaces, and that is de facto, as we found out, uh, older adult housing, where most people in the building are fifty-five and older.
What about guest parking, just throwing it out there?
There will be some spaces, uh, we are accounting for, I think, um, within, you know, this count or down below, um, there is, uh, if you are able to scroll, um, for me...
Down here?
Uh, yeah, uh, sorry, actually, just, uh, go back up a little bit at the end of this building, between the two properties, right, oh, right, here. Um, this parking here is underutilized, where the, some of it will become the driveway through, um, but that, that existing impervious surface, that parking area is otherwise underutilized, and that could be, um, where the, the guests may have to walk a little further, but it's still, um, I think, within a, a stone's throw.
Where you gonna put snow?
Uh, we will push it out to the end, uh, we will likely push it, um, down, uh, to what is northeast, southwest, west of Penobscot Place is sort of bottom, um, and then out to probably here as well, depending on how the curbing and stuff will work.
Mostly to the southeast, uh, southwest.
Southwest.
Yeah, you got the largest buffer there working.
Well, I was thinking about where are the people gonna put their cars when they gotta, when you come in there to clear it up?
Uh, there are times, if, you know, if we have a normal Maine winter, um, with as much pavement as we have here, um, we will bring in a, or rent, or have someone come in with a bigger piece of equipment, uh, to move piles back, in order to take some snow away if we have to.
Is there a reason why there is no handicap on the other side, since it's gonna be fifty-five and over?
Other than just, right now...
Well, it takes up more slots, so I'm just wondering if it's...
What ends up happening, because we, we overbuild the handicap spaces,
Yeah.
we end up making them somewhat flexible, and so while we build the unit to have full accessibility, we have a lot of tenants who come in and don't actually use it or don't have a need for it at that time, just as like they may not have a car. We then adapt the parking long-term, so we'll re-stripe, repaint, relabel, reassign the parking. If, so if someone comes in and says, oh, I have a van, okay, then we have to take whoever was next to them, stripe that as their van loading, unloading, we may double stack that, that van space, um, like we do here if we can and if we have to, but otherwise, we'll, we'll play Tetris and give it around.
Seems to me from what you're saying, the handicap should actually be on the other side, because that's fifty-five and over, the yellow one's workforce.
Well, we, we can certainly add handicap spacing to the other side, add a couple of spaces to make it accessible.
I'm just looking at what you're doing, it's gonna have an elevator, you, you guys are doing a great job. You know, but I'm just looking at it going, okay, why is it on that side when the older population's on the other side?
The, the entire parking lot will be two percent all accessible, so in the, uh, unshaded area, all of that is two percent. So any one of those spaces could be designated as accessible.
Well, we need, we need more fifty-five and over. I think it's a great project. How soon would it go in?
Best case scenario, we would break ground by next fall, or this fall, sorry, this fall, I apologize. That's if, that's if we can move through the process quick enough, but...
Would you be doing both at the same time?
Likely.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, all right.
Well, likely, um, if, if we're awarded, we may very well be awarded both within the same window, if that's the case, we'd likely do one, um, RFP, um, for subcontractors and everybody, um, and get a, some sort of efficiency and scale.
Luke, is there any code or anything on the parking?
One space per dwelling unit is what's required by code.
Got it.
Right, that's, accounts for the fifty-eight spaces.
Yep, that, what I was, I, I added them up, fifty-eight, you're right.
Right, that's...
Yep. Okay. But that includes the guest parking?
No.
No, guest parking can be, or is planned to be down here, as well as, um, you know, we know that we'll, even at fifty-eight, we'll overbuild it. Um, and then we'll, we'll sort of adjust and or work on the fly, um, and that's sort of the last. We end up building... And that's sort of the last, we end up building the parking and then wait. As we're, as we're almost done the building, we, we begin lease up and that's when we get a good sense from at least the initial lease up period, how many individuals have a car, how many have a van, even if they're accessible. And so that's sort of the last piece to get built into the contract.
So one last question, it's three floors.
Yes.
Why not four?
Uh, height restrictions.
Just a question.
Yeah, height restrictions.
Sitting up on that hill already, so I don't know.
Might have a nice view.
They're going to have some nice views up there.
I would, I would imagine if you're on the top floor, you'd be able to have a nice view out to see the town and the fort and rival your house there, Dick.
Exactly, yeah. I was just looking at it going, wow, that's going to be a nice.
This is yours with the height restriction, so the model is at three currently with a typically a basement for storage.
Walk-in basement?
No.
No. Topography doesn't.
Well, no, I understand, you never know, they can come in from the back.
But one of, that's a good question because on some of the other lots that we've looked at, we've looked at daylight basements because of the topography.
Exactly.
Makes more sense.
That's what I was kind of looking at with the way it's in there.
Yeah, as we get closer to the ball field.
For these first two, we purposely planned them on the flattest piece of land that you have on that site to kind of get our foot in the door and get going.
Because in part, we're, I mentioned this the last time, the Buckport Village Apartments, we're having to bring in and we're sort of taking on the chin a lot of the infrastructure costs by the size of the pipe and some of the things that we're doing. So those are the cheapest from a site perspective, properties to build. And then long term, we'll be strategic about if and how we build the rest of the lot out, incurring those costs.
And, and remind me, are you getting natural gas pumped up there anyway?
We, so it's, it's weird and funny, but Buckport Village Apartments, we will be allowed to use fossil fuels. The funding for Penobscot Place because it's same pants, different pockets and entirely different ballgame.
That's why, okay.
That's why. So we may bring it up, but we're going to do a, a better analysis. Once we have the funding in place and once we know the timeline, we have a couple of other models in terms of mechanical packages. And so we will design and someone, I won't pay him to design everything under the sun, but we'll design a fair amount and, and sort of better than back of the envelope, price that out with where we think everything else is going.
Anyone else on the board have any more questions for, for Jason?
About electrical, I, that's still kind of up in the air.
With what, sorry?
All the electrical.
Oh, you mean underground versus, he literally means up in the air.
Oh, I see, um.
I noticed some of it had been marked underground, I think that was maybe for the sight lighting?
Correct, the underground, no, sight lighting will be underground and we hope to run up along the property line overhead and then drop below ground when we're close to the building, just to save a few dollars there.
So everything around the building is going to be underground?
Typically, you'll see a pad mount transformer, then everything's underground from there.
No, any common area inside the building?
Yes, good point. Uh, we haven't finalized the site, the interior design, but when it comes to our current model, there is a couple of things. One, there's an office for anyone who comes in that may have office hours either with our team or an outside provider. Thinking like, uh, you know, area agency on aging or something like that. But there is at least one common room that can account for, I think, thirty or so people with a kitchen and that's where they will, will have either speakers come in or they can do quilting, birthdays, parties, those kinds of things in there. And then within the hallways, there are sort of the landing spots of each stairwell. There's often a, an area for three or four chairs for common space to, to either look out the window, read or, or do whatever.
That's where the mail will be delivered, there's laundry specifically at, on any tomorrow on every floor as well.
Yeah, good point.
Any more questions, George, you're all set. You're all set. Anyone else on the board, any more questions? Good, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any property buyers here to this project? Okay, come on up if you'd wish to speak, come up, introduce yourself.
I think I'm going to butter because I got a letter. I don't think it's going to impact me at all. I'm Jodi Aragona, I feel like I'm before you guys a lot. Um, hi.
Hi.
I don't really have much to say. I don't know if my friends who I sold the property on Seekan Street to.
They called me today.
If they have anything to say. I told them, get on, it's, it's broadcasted, but I don't know, so I'm not upset by this at all.
Okay, good. Well, we always like to hear from property buyers because, I mean, you, you are important to any project. So that's why we want you to be able to speak your piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the one you heard from was in the Wishers?
They live in New Jersey?
Yeah.
And he wanted to see where it was in relation to his, he couldn't find the plan, so I showed him where it was on the website. I didn't hear anything else, so I'm assuming he found it and had his look, so.
Anybody else on the board get any other concerns? At some point, we've got to do a little finding of fact here. Would the board prefer that I go down through each individual section in there? Most of them are covered very well and what wasn't answered in there, I think has been answered before us today. Does anybody wish for me to go through those sections individually? Okay, uh, anybody care to make a motion at this point?
I'll make a motion to grant the phase two approval, approval for phase two.
Motion's been made to approve this phase, anyone want to second?
Second.
So moved and seconded and thirded to approve this project? Any other discussion by the board?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, you can move forward on your project.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Do you need a letter or something in order to apply for the funding?
Uh, we will, we will need a letter?
Yes.
We'll reach out.
I think Peter reached out before, it's the same thing.
I just couldn't remember. I write a lot of letters.
It's written.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, so we, yeah, we'll be, we'll write it for you.
Suggesting.
Thank you.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Next item, administrative business, there is none. Next item is limited public forum and this is an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Is there anyone that wishes to speak during this limited public forum? Seeing none, I will close that. Next item is discussion. And I'll beat, I will beat Richard to it. So what's going on up at Springtown?
I thought I already answered that.
Well, I, I drive by there and half the face is out from, it looks like where the employee or the person that, that lived there or that owned it lived downstairs where the, the.
Office.
Office was, and then upstairs where the living quarters were. What seems to be going on there?
Your guess is as good as mine. They just ripped everything out and they're ripping all the interior out and stuff, which that's fine, they can demo all they want. They just can't go back and start building until they have a plan and permits, so.
But you said they are building.
I've been trying to stay out of it as much as possible. I did go up and talk to them once through a translator app because they don't speak English and I don't speak Spanish. And they were, at that time, they were sheet rocking and mudding and taping in there and.
Well, they took down, I think you said, the condemn signs or whatever was up there?
The dangerous building signs were on each door and the doors were all gone.
And they took those down and of course, they probably can't read English, so maybe we need to do them up in Spanish as well. I don't know, I just see a lot of stuff as we talked about, a lot of stuff going on up there that doesn't make sense that shouldn't be stopped.
I'm working on it, the lawyers are working on it, so.
I'm assuming the gentleman's lawsuit against you and the town is still pending?
Still pending, April will be three years, so.
Okay, I guess I'll have no more discussion of that.
Has the property owner discussed what their plans or what they're doing?
Not with me.
Are these guys working for the owner?
They're working for a subcontractor who was hired by a contractor who was hired by a son. That's what I'm told.
And I heard that they are supposed to be back in town this month.
Who's they?
I guess those workers' boss.
I have yet to see a boss, but.
Yeah, that's.
I'm sure there is one somewhere, but I've yet to meet them, so it's, it's a mess, so.
I would assume that the town has no liability to somebody just to go in and start doing whatever to somebody's bu- building.
No, I mean, I, no. There's no, there's nothing more I can legally do. So I've issued the stop work order, I've talked to our lawyer, we're following the steps, so.
That's all we can do.
The lawsuit's not proceeding because of the legal system, right?
Yeah, the courts just haven't got around to it.
I mean, there ought to be some sort of statute of limitations on those kind of things that, that have an impact.
Yeah. I think once they, once they enter the legal system, they go at their own pace, right? That's, that's just the way it works, so.
Only maybe next time, well, I'm not going to say it, but it'll still be recorded.
Yeah, I, I don't understand the thought process there, but I mean, it's. I think it's a strategic move and that's as far as I'm going to go with that. Okay. It's all a big game. Well, what's the end goal here, I mean, it's, are they going to ever? To take the town for everything we've got, that's his end goal. Okay, I don't know, they're not going to ever get any kind of certificate of occupancy or, I mean, does never. Well, never say never, but not without some major changes in how they do things. Yeah, but if they proceed as. Not really going, no, it's, so what's the point? I don't understand, but that's what. If they can tell the court that they have a team of workers up there. Okay, it's. It seems to be all more trouble than I'd want if that were my headache, I think I'd just want to cut loss and walk away and be done. And I think like you, but it's like, okay, just didn't work out, next, I don't know.
Any other items for discussion?
There's one thing I would meant to ask in addition of the pankish people. I didn't know if they were going to include any like EV charging stations, just in case.
Yeah, they, they mentioned three of them.
Did they?
That they're going to try to.
I didn't catch that, that they mentioned any.
Yeah, I thought to them before.
Before the meeting. Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, it's a thing now, so it's. Yeah, I mean, if you're going to have sixty cars, odds are some of them are going to be electric, so.
Anything else? Moving on, next item, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion's been made to adjourn, anyone wish to second?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, any discussion on that? Probably not, all those in favor? Those opposed?